Good evening, Merry Christmas to all. I'd like to open up the Board of Commissioners meeting, December 20th, 2012. Those who would, please join us in the prayer and the pledge. Stand if you can.
Please bow. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've created for us. Father, we thank you for the many blessings of life. Father, we want to be mindful of this season. Father, as your birth of your Son, Jesus Christ. Father, that we'll keep this in mind through the holiday seasons, Father. Father, we ask that you would guide these men and women as they undertake the business of the city, that their decisions would be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. From a motion and a second, any discussion, any other additions or deletions at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. We have citizens' comments, first is Cass Fagan, Fagan, I'm sorry if I spelled that, said that incorrectly. Please approach the podium. You have three minutes to state your concerns. Good evening.
Okay. This is really a request to put in front of the board to extend paving on Black Pine Road. I purchased property at the end of Black Pine Road. It's been given an address, my Donald Born is 7108. So my request is to extend the paving on Black Pine Road to that address. Is that something that will be talked about tonight, or will that go on the next agenda?
It won't be discussed this, tonight. The agenda has just been approved of the items that is presented in writing. What that would be is your discussion with City Manager Hyatt, and also the Public Works, he will direct you from there. They would be able to discuss what, where and how that fits, and how the next step, whether it's brought before us or not. Standardly, we do not discuss individual paving jobs, but if it's something the City Manager thinks we need to discuss, he'll bring it before us at the next meeting.
Okay, so I could contact you.
Andrew Hyatt, City Manager, yes ma'am. Thank you. We have Mr. Wayne Hall, would you please approach the podium?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Just like to briefly state an opinion of mine, as far as your appointment on the planning commission. I would like to see Patty Stewart stay on there, Allen take my place for 90 days. Give your new appointees workshops to handle the necessary things that needs to be handled as far as what planning needs to be done for the city of Fairview, such as public safety, reading blueprints, stormwater runoff, protecting, you know, existing neighborhoods, protecting the park with the lighting. And that way, you could still resign at the end of 90 days, Stewart could still resign, whoever the other appointee from the Commissioners are, if you choose to take, keep talking. Then you would have your three citizens, still a nine-member board without having appointed a 10th person. And that way, you would give them an opportunity before they come to the board, where they won't get up there and feel, you know, relying on everybody else to do the talking, and rely on everybody else to do the voting, and follow suit. That way, they would have their own opinions that way. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on citizens' comments is Ms. Millicent Kitter. Good evening.
Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, here on behalf of the Friends of the Fairview Library. In the past, the community, the citizens, the city, and the Commissioners have been very generous in their support of the library and the Friends of the Library, and especially generous in donating books, purchasing books for the library, purchasing books at our book sale, and the wonderful gift from the city last year. Just by way of appreciation, and to thank and honor all of those who have been so kind to the library, we're going to be hosting a reception on the 3rd of January, from 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, at the library. Everyone is invited, I'm just here to extend a personal invitation to anybody and everybody who has supported the library, or is interested in the library, or joining the Friends of the Library. So again, thank you. That's 3:00 January, 3:00 to 5:00 P.M. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you.
Good to you.
Moving on, we have item four on the agenda is awards and recognition.
Mayor, there are no staff awards or recognition this evening.
Okay, I have one, is there any from the board? All right. This is our wonderful fire department, and they have been given a grant, and I'd like to read the information about it. The Federal Emergency Management Agency has awarded the city of Fairview a grant in the amount of $455,100 to hire three full-time firefighters for three years. These firefighters will be military veterans who have served post 9/11. With the current military drawdown, there are many thousands of former servicemen and women who, having completed their service obligation, now find themselves competing for jobs in the workplace. This grant is designed to place veterans into a career. The city of Fairview is both privileged and honored to be selected to participate in this program, which will benefit both veterans and the residents of Fairview. Thank you very much, and we want to congratulate the fire department for the due diligence, Gunny for taking care of the grant, filling in all the blanks, obviously doing well, and for the emergency management for choosing us, we are very grateful. Moving on, number five, public announcements.
Mayor, just would like to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed on Monday the 24th and Tuesday the 25th.
I'd like to also invite the public, as well as anyone in the chambers, that January 9th, 2013, January 9th, so Wednesday morning, we will be having a business breakfast. It will be hosted by Hickory Home, and we will have our special guest speaker, our Congressman Marsha Blackburn will join us. So we hope that not only you put it on your calendar, but you invite someone. It's an open for the public, the community is invited, it is business-focused in seeing how we can move forward in the year ahead, 2013, as not only a city, as our economics, and as our active Chamber of Commerce. So we invite everyone to Hickory Home, 7:30 a.m. on January 9th. Any other public announcements? Okay, approval of the amendments, the amendments that are presented are November 15th, 2012. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a first and second, is there any discussion, additions or deletions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Number O business, number 7A is updates on the city of Fairview project. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of this will be repeated from previous meetings, but again, Bowie Lake Road project will be going out for bid, January 15th, 2013. We have completed the structural integrity work on the Triangle School, and at a cost of $48,565. The streetlights have been completed, and do add a nice touch to our Fairview Boulevard. We have completed one welcome-to-Fairview sign, and we are working on the second one. So we are moving forward with that. The second one is being put up as we speak. Concrete was poured today for the footers at Highway 96 Fire Station. So next week, we'll start putting the stone up. So we'll see some progress there. As far as paving projects and things like that, obviously, nothing will take place until the spring, early summer, I say spring, but it'd be more likely early summer, we were gonna have a, bring a paving package to you probably in the spring, late spring, and go forward with that toward the summer to wrap two fiscal budget years together. That's it. Also, I believe, Matco will be opening tomorrow, so just wanted to let that word out there. That's all, unless you have questions.
Well, how's the lighting coming on the signs completed?
We put some temporary lighting out there, we're waiting till we get them all complete to see if we can get a bid package for all three of them. We haven't moved any further on that as of yet.
Seen it lit up, maybe I'm just wrong.
You go out there at night, it's dark out there.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
There's some solar lights.
We've got some solar lights, cool when your headlights are on it, it overrides those solar lights, so you'd really have to get out and look, it's not much light at all, no. So we are looking at it, we're looking at several options, but we wanted to wait till we got all three of them together to see if there was something we could do as a package instead of individually on those.
It's a great job on the sign.
Any comments? Thank you, the sign looks beautiful.
Well, it's very, very exciting to come in and see that. I'm sure the citizens are happy that that's there, it's a Christmas present from the city of Fairview.
And I have gotten a lot of positive comments and emails on the sign as well.
Great. What about the Cox Pike light, any news?
None, we're at the mercy of TDOT, so we're just waiting on them to respond to us, but has not, I have not, I don't know if Don has in the last 24 hours been contacted by TDOT, but we haven't heard anything recently.
Last we had any word from, they projected that it would be completed around February. So, they're in the process of having the poles manufactured, and then they'll install them once they come in.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for that update. Item 7B, discuss and take action on report from Public Safety Committee on school zone signage. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, I believe the Commissioner Bussell has some information for us tonight.
Pass these out up here. And then, Teresa, could you help me by making sure the table has them, and then there are some additional ones here, if anybody in the public would, that's here in the meeting would like to come by and get one after. The, I'm, I guess it was kinda, didn't step back quick enough and got elected as the spokesperson, so I wanted to do this PowerPoint. We had a very good meeting, covered a lot of subjects, we went past just the signage, so I'll cover that first, since that was the initial part of the meeting, but we did cover some other stuff. In attendance, Commissioner Sutton, myself, Mr. Hyatt, Chief Cooper, Chief Harris, Captain Sutton, Captain Gunny Hughes, and Jason Langford, another fire captain. We had three agenda items, the school zone, traffic patterns and issues. We then moved into public safety and training complex, and the problems with pistol range, and then Chief Cooper brought up the fire trucks, the fire apparatus. So let's talk first about the school zone recommendations and actions, and I believe Chief Harris, would you mind helping me if I forget something on this, please? Came up with several actions, many of which they just put into, the chief was able, the chief and the City Manager were able to just take the initiative and put into effect, but the ideas that came out to improve our situations around the school zones, improved signage on Old Franklin Road, and I believe that's already been taken care of, to do some things with the school board in Williamson County on guardrails to help secure the children. Joint effort with the school board to add some additional segmented school zone lights and our signage. Eventually, we'd like to move the lights from being overhead lights to on the side, like over at Westview, and then paint more markings on the highway, so that as you're driving through it, you clearly know when you're in a school zone and when you're not. Chief Harris, did I forget anything?
No.
Do you want to give a status of any of that stuff? I know they'd already done some signs, and Captain Sutton had already talked to some people.
And we order signs, drawing out, put in between the two lines. So it's, so far, so we ordered some signs to put on cones, and we'll put them after it too.
Because when someone comes out in between those, there's no, there's no markings?
Right.
Okay, good.
The, one thing that I just thought was interesting, that everyone might be interested in that came out, was that we had contacted Williamson County and the schools about when they closed the elementary school out there on, I'm drawing a blank, Pine Wood. Getting that signage, since that signage was, and we were denied that, they had other uses for that signage rather than let us have it, even though we got the children and got the other traffic. Any questions from any of the board that Chief Harris or I could try to answer, Commissioner Sutton could try to answer?
Did you order the cones, the new cones for them also?
We're gonna use our cones, they're already.
The big tall ones?
Yes.
Okay.
They did order some signs or something that go, that go down in them in the middle of the highway, that indicate that it's a school zone, so.
There's, there's one sign out by stopping, so even then, you don't see anything else until you get over the hill and through the woods, and you've got two changes in speed limits, you've got a 25 mile an hour sign between such, such times on those things, and that we felt like if they can't see those big cones sitting there with big signs in the middle of them, there's no excuse anymore. And with some signs on the side of the road also, that was a big one.
As I had previously stated to the board earlier, that our police range, our firing range is pretty dilapidated and gotten pretty bad. And so, we moved into that conversation, and so I thought I would share just the brainstorming. It's not on the agenda tonight to take any action on, so it's just a committee report out of some of the stuff that we talked about, but we covered a lot of things, and we came up with what we thought was a pretty solid plan. If, what we were hoping to do with it is to refine it, and we know we have a budget workshop next month, funding is going to be the issue, just how much money do we want to put into it? So we thought that we would, and the two captains assisted me in this, we thought we would come to that with, you know, more finite information about cost and stuff like that. So some of the numbers you may see in the next three or four slides are pretty general numbers, they're pretty, they're pretty loose, but it's to give you an idea. Anyway, the 27 acres that is part of the Bowie Park needing that has always been reserved, and this board has actually voted to reserve it for public safety use, in all reality, we don't need 27 acres to do what we need to do for public safety, it's not in the best location for us, there's probably better use for that property from the city. So we did some brainstorming, and we came up with the idea that the Deer Ridge property, and then part of Northwest property, if needed, could be better used for that. For the police range, we were, we came up with the idea that we would contact WADC and would see if they would give us back our range. If they would do that, then of course, we could spend money, a lot less money, to actually improve what we have out there, and for the next four or five years, that would do us really well. We could, and I list some things on the PowerPoint that we could do to do that, I won't go through line by line, but this stuff is stuff that, fairly reasonable for a reasonable amount of money, we could make it work. Our understanding is they can't expand out there anymore, so we're hoping that they would see the logic to just give it to us, and that would, that would cause some problems, I mean, would alleviate some problems. And then on the Deer Ridge is where we would, we would go to begin the building of, of buildings for the fire department, and a classroom, and then a long-term constructions of driving pads and other things else. The next slide is just a mock-up, you may have seen it before, I've shared it, of how we could improve the current firing range location, would be reasonably cost to do that. And then, if they wouldn't agree to do that, for the next four or five years, or until Browland Farms actually ever breaks ground and starts building, we have plenty of space out there off Northwest Highway that we could build a temporary range without too much difficulty, and at least have a better facility than what we currently have. The Deer Ridge Training Complex, it really will take five years to build what we really want. That would include a joint-use training classroom, a fire training building, which you will see a little later, that actually could be used by the police department for enter-and-capture type drills, live burn pads where we could set cars on fire, and pour chemicals out there and set them on fire, and actually practice live stuff, outdoor fitness course, and could possibly serve as our West Side Fire Station, and then eventually, we could build an indoor firing range. You know where the maps are, and then I go through each year, and Gunny provided this stuff, so it's, I'll let you go through it by yourself, but the bottom line is that in five years, we could build a facility that would be a real showplace. We could, we would be marked for the future for the next 30 years. And so, what I was hoping to get was kind of, and like I said, there's no vote required, but I was hoping to get kind of a verbal go-ahead from the board to continue working with this for numbers. This is an expensive proposition, this is over the course of five years, somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 to build it right. However, the impact to our constituents is significant. If we were able to build this out, as we have described it here, in essence, the homeowners would get annually, and I use the example, there's a slide in here that talks about the homeowner's insurance impact, but on a $200,000 home, it would have the effect of lowering their insurance somewhere between $125 and $175 annually. So when you realize that a $200,000 home in the city of Fairview pays about $250,000, I mean, $250 in tax, we basically give them back what they pay in tax, or at least 50% of it or more, by reducing their insurance. So I, in the long run, it's a win for the city, because it gives us a highly-trained fire department, police department, gives us facility for the long run, but it also is a win for our citizens, because they're, they basically, they don't get a tax rebate, but they do get it back in terms of their insurance. And then the last item, and Chief Cooper, could you help me on this, please? Because of the contract of what we've done, we need to buy a fire truck. I know we've got the tanker.
Order, we're discussing public safety sign zones, we're really on the third subject now. I'm gonna have to ask that we stay on point of order.
What rule, under Roberts Rule of Order, what rule am I violating? When you call point of order.
That you've just asked about a fire truck, that's not the public safety requirement?
Yes ma'am, I have the floor, I can talk about whatever I would like to. I have covered the agenda item, and I'm speaking. When I cede the floor, I have not violated a rule. If you can tell me what rule I've violated, I will continue, I will stop.
Proceed.
Thank you.
We have the need to purchase fire apparatus, additional fire apparatus, and so these slides are for your information. We are to the point that we will, after the first of the year, need to have this as an agenda item to discuss, and we wanted to get this information out to you, so that you would have time to look over it, because this is something that we will have to take care of very quickly in January. Otherwise, we, our ISO rating will go the other way when we have to report that. Chief, would you care to add anything to that?
Sure, we, the ad hoc committee met in 2010, and I had asked at that time for two trucks, the rescue truck, which we did purchase two years ago, last year, and an engine. And we now know wisely, the ad hoc committee instructed me to pick one or the other, and because we had so much trouble, and you all remember this, with the old rescue, we used one we had bought, we replaced that. And those instructions from the ad hoc committee at that time was to come back in two years, here we are, and go out to bid on the replacement for the, for the fire truck. Originally to be awarded in July, however, our finance director says wait until December, they're a 12-month delivery, it won't be delivered, or in service actually, until January of '14, because she knows you'll have the revenue stream to pay for it at that time. Also, with the county contract, the, the engine we use as our reserve apparatus is going away January 1st, leaving us with two fire engines. We'll get by for the year, we're gonna use our tanker to fill that slot, should one of the two engines have to go in for service or something like that, so we can always have a piece of apparatus in one of our fire stations. So we're gonna call that our reserve. And then ISO came to town, and they weren't due here until 2015, but their logic is Williamson County is a fast-growing county, and they're not gonna do us every five years. We think, because we took credit for the county apparatus when they came here in September, and by the way, they said it was 60 to 70 days for their report to come back, it's now day 90, and I'm sure they're waiting for the holidays to be over to go back to work. I would like an email or a phone call or something, I'm waiting every day by the mailbox. We think that the rating will go down initially, but then after January 1st, I've got to call them and tell them I've lost that third truck, and we'll see what happens then. They will give you credit for a truck if you can produce a purchase order, even though it's not here yet, because they know it's gonna come in. If you said, here, I'm, I'm ordered it, here's my delivery date, they will credit you. So I hope to offset that loss by, in January. What I'd like to do also is replace the East Side Fire Station. The gentleman, when he was here, he's a veteran of the fire service, and a longtime veteran of ISO, which was good, because he would be very thorough and not miss anything. The bad part about that is he would be very thorough and not miss anything. But he told us right away, we're gonna take a beating on manpower, we know that, and on company distribution or number of fire stations. I told him, we used to have one on the east side, and we don't, we'll work to replace that. I have a couple proposals that we can do it economically. And what I hope to do within the next two budget cycles, within the next two years, is drive our ISO from a six to a four. I think that will save several hundred thousand dollars per year, every single year. And that's not, when you tell somebody, I didn't raise your taxes, so I saved you money, but your tax bill is the same, okay? Here you get your insurance bill, and it went down, and it's gonna stay down every year. The second big thing is when businesses come to do business in a city, the first thing they ask you, what's your ISO rating? Because while a homeowner pays a lot, a business owner pays a lot for, for insurance. So again, this is an awful lot on the table, plus, we fell into this grant now, so we picked up three slots. So now I can, I'm halfway demanding that second station, or the third station, if you would. I see your hand up.
Yeah, in respect to the mayor's concern, we probably will need to put this on an agenda item for January, because that's.
Yes.
We're getting far into the details than just the committee report, so is there one last comment?
I'm wrapping up. Again, it all came to, I had to build those sideboards on my plate, because I had so much going on at once, but I need to act, so I can get us ISO off my back. Not only that, over the next couple of years, get this thing going, and save these people a lot of money.
Thank you. That's our report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the board on the Safety Committee report on the school zone signage? There be none, we move on. Item C, discuss and/or take action on proposed vacation leave policy. Commissioner Bussell?
I'll move to the City Manager. When he raised this issue at the last meeting, I had just not had an opportunity to look at it. I did look at it, I looked at what the other government agencies in our county are doing, and they're all, they're doing it, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't have any objections whatsoever to it. So I believe it, it meets the same general criteria that the other county offices, the county and the other cities are doing, and I would submit that any concerns I had have been removed, and I endorse it.
What are the wishes of the board?
I move to approve it.
We have a first?
Second.
A second, any discussion? All those in favor, oh, sorry, discussion, sorry.
Did this, I don't have the old one in front of me. The 18 days? Is that the same, did we go up or down here? And the, like you break in, the, he wrote 12 days, 15 days, 18?
Do you need this to compare?
Yeah, maybe I do.
18 years of vacation.
Well, there's handwritten days on there, so that's what I'm referring to. Oh, compared to hours, okay, okay. I just knew it didn't strike a bell with, was that the one?
Nothing changed from what we originally, uh...
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got one other question. At what point would they start to be eligible for these days? Is it July or January?
Well, this would be, if you approve it tonight, it'd be for January. We would, would, but you start accumulating over the year, you don't go in January 1st and all of a sudden get the whole year, you've got to earn it every month. It's not gonna be, you're not gonna come in January 1st and all of a sudden we give a 20-year employee 200 years, 200 hours of vacation. They'll get 16.67 every month, it'll build, it'll be, we'll convert what they currently have into hours and, and run that forward that way and then they can roll over up to the 20, I believe the first one's gonna be changed to 40 hours instead of the 20 hours, but up to 40 or 80 hours.
Well, the only thing I was kinda curious about, and I apologize if you're having to re-explain this again, but I still not sure why we're gonna give a first-year employee the opportunity to roll over the hours.
Well, we can change that to second, we just put it in there as first.
I mean, do you know, kind of? If we're using it as a reward system for longevity?
Sure.
Because if they can cash it in.
And that, that could be changed to years of service. You'd earn it the first through the fourth year, but you don't, can only roll over the second through the fourth year.
Yeah.
Something like that. We could change that very easily, yes.
Well, we're in discussion with a motion and a second to approve is written, so to change it, we might need to discuss whether you wanna make an amendment to have that, if we go forward in this vote, then it's voted upon as written.
Well, I would like to make amendment, Mayor, that we change it to the second year.
We have an amended motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Is this only, is it potential to the rollover?
Yeah, because...
So a first-year employee would have to use up all their vacation time rather than allowing them to roll it over?
Correct. That's what I understand. Her motion.
Other discussion?
I've got one more question on here. If, if it's gonna start in January with no rollover involved in it, it's gonna take, yes, a five through nine example, he's gonna get 10 hours a month, it's gonna take him four months before he can take a vacation, a week's vacation.
Not, not if they currently have some and their anniversary date's not till April 15th. They'd still have some vacation left over.
Okay, I doubt it.
Mine's January 4th and I've got 48 hours left over. So, yeah, it's pretty easy to do.
You know what, that's the point because...
Correct. That's all.
Commissioner Bussell has compared this to other governments within the county. Commissioner Carroll, can you speak to the fact that does the, in year one of your employment with Williamson County, do you get 12 days of vacation if you stay the whole year? Where, alright, so Commissioner Bussell, if you could explain how, or how much do you qualify for the first year?
You get six, well, of vacation?
Vacation days.
Um, I get one month, I mean, one day every six months. I mean, I don't, I can't recall. Six days, I know I get two personal days and I get it, I have to work six months to get the first one, then the second one, I would get the other. So I guess that would be considered. Now vacation, I have to be there, yes.
Yeah, her contract is not like Williamson County, hers is entirely different. You get, you get so many hours, of course, it progresses as far as your years and stuff go, but the top accumulating time point is like 6.6 hours per month that you start to accumulate. And of course, as you've been there longer, you get more. I've been there over 15 years and I think I'm up to four weeks. So it's, we don't have good days and stuff, which are, personal days is what they call them.
Well, and that's the only thing, I mean, I kinda see what the vice mayor's saying, but with that, it's, most jobs you don't. Rolling over is not always, I mean, you had to, like, even the job I came prior, but it wasn't government, but the job, you had to use your week, you know, you, within that first year, you didn't get to roll it over.
See, that's my exact thing. I say, I don't, I think we differ a little bit on that, is I don't really care so much that they roll it over. If they earned it, they earned it. But why is somebody the first year qualifying for 12 days just because they work for the government, but if they work in the private sector, they're only gonna get a maximum of two weeks and no, and most companies make you be there a year before you even get a week. I don't understand why we're just, just because you work for the government, we're just gonna give you days off.
My, my opinion is you use it to lose it, and I know the citizens or the, the employees probably would boo me on that, and I'm sorry and I don't mean it personal, but I believe that it's a benefit that's given for the benefit that it is, and to roll them over and I, how much is 640 hours? I don't know, I mean, I know that sounds silly, but how many days is that work? Is that...
640 hours.
I mean, in that, let's just say in January, whoever's been here 10 years to 19 years has 640 potential rollover hours, how, is that?
No, only 80.
80 is, 80 is all you can roll over.
80 rollover, I was reading that wrong, I apologize.
That'd be two weeks.
Okay, two weeks.
Yeah, 640 hours would be 80 days.
Total potential rollover hours.
But what Commissioner Sutton was saying was if, some of these people where they are right now, if they had a vacation scheduled in January, depending on when their anniversary date is, they may or not, may or may not be able to take it because January 1st, they haven't accrued enough days to take it.
Which, which with Williamson County, that, you know, we saw it. You just don't take a vacation, this is what it is when you come to work and you accept that when you come to work. If possible, they try to work with them, but they can't give you what you haven't earned. And if we've got people with some time and experience and they don't have any rollover, since this is the beginning of this program, it's possible somebody's been here five years and not be able to take a vacation for the next three months. But that's, that's another point for us to take a look at, also on hours, you, you can, depending on your longevity, build up to 350 hours worth of rollover, which you get paid for if you retire or resign, because that's yours, you didn't use it. As we've all said, that vacation time is something that doesn't cost the city anything because you would pay them if they were working. We do not get to occur and roll over our sick time and take it when we get ready to leave unless we retire. Sick time is forfeited when you leave unless you retire from the program. And, and we can roll it over also, but we can only roll over 52 hours a year of sick time, because that's how many you're actually given in a year's time when you start doing the sick, whatever it is.
Well, I'm not against if it's a majority and it, it's the best thing for longevity, let me restate that. I saw Chief Cooper's face when I said what I said, and so I do understand that that's not the wishes of the ones that are standing for the benefits, but if you've earned it, you've earned it. And I'll stand behind that as that's a good thing and that's the right thing to do, and I believe awarding good employees is something that the city needs to be truly focused on. Other discussion? We have an amendment. I'd like to vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I believe I heard two from here, yes, ayes.
I, I voted aye.
Okay, so the amendment passes, the change of the first year addressed. We have the formal motion of the acceptance of the vacation time breakdown. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is new business. Eight A, discuss and undertake action on appointment of three planning commission seats. And that three should be four, but with it saying three commission seats, that is the commission seats that address the public. The one seat that does need to be addressed and, Mr. Cantrell, you may have to direct this, since it doesn't say the commissioner's seat, can we do it there or do we need to address it in a different item?
It would be, the, if, the one for the person serving elected by the commission would need to be addressed in a separate item, and if it's not on the agenda, would need to be put on next agenda.
Correct. Okay, so we'll move to that of three planning commission seats. City Manager Hyatt?
Mayor, y'all had the discussion at the workshop prior to this meeting and I'm not sure what the consensus has been, but I think we're at a point where we need to either defer until the first meeting in January, which will still give you time to get it to the, before the planning commission, or I guess entertain Mr. Hall's recommendation and put that on the agenda at January 3rd, I believe it's January 3rd meeting. So at this point, I'm not sure that we need to take action unless there's something that y'all want to take action on from the meeting as far as appointing the commissioners. I'm not sure they can do that.
What are the wishes of the board of the three appointments for the planning commission seats?
Mayor? I, I think it's important that we designate the persons on this board that will be serving with you on the planning commission before we move to the next level, which would be to appoint the three. So if, if the advice of our city attorney is we cannot do that tonight, then I think we should defer them all until the meeting that we can do that, which would be the first meeting of January, and that we take that action first before we appoint additional members to the board. That's what I, that's what I think we should do. And I will make a motion to that effect if...
First and second, discussion? Well, this has been tearing on real long and I am in position to make nominations for the planning commission. We have a motion on the floor, so we'll move forward on that, but I guess I, I would say I apologize to any and all people that's been dragging through this for months and the decision has not been made and we do need to move on with the subject. Wouldn't be in an amendment to your motion for me to make a nomination, would it?
Got a motion on the board?
Yeah, but I...
I think you have to do my...
No, I could do an amendment to the motion, but I don't think I wanna amend that specific one, so at this point, I'll ask for any other discussion?
Will you explain again? You're saying just hold off until the commission's seat?
Well, I, I thought we would be able to, to, one of us will serve on the planning commission with the mayor. So I think that that person should be selected first before we move to nominating for the other three vacant positions.
I don't disagree that it should have been on the agenda. I don't disagree that we shouldn't have known that that was a situation we had to refill now that the elections was over. When I asked for it to be put on the agenda, I was just reminding that it be put on because it's time to do it, but I didn't say three, it was just to fill the seat. So at that point, it kinda got moved and it says three and City Manager Hyatt, which I realize you were gonna discuss the applications, which we haven't got to, and we're back at, the commission spot can't be filled because of the way the agenda reads, so we're gonna move forward.
Well, I, I, no disrespect intended, but I, I, I don't, the more I look at it, I, I think we can fill it. I, I don't see, it's, it's, it's a matter of number, not a matter of, it is a planning commission seat.
What if the number three was not there, could we do it? I agree. If the number three was not there, could we fill the commission seat because of the agenda item?
Right, but it's, but it is there, and it's not on the agenda.
But one of the three, one of, one of the three could...
Yeah.
One of the three could be one of the commissioners instead of...
It, it could be, but you're, you're playing with fire. You're, you're filling something that, you're creating a situation that is subject to challenge that you don't need. The, the agenda needs to be clear that you've got three planning commission seats from the citizens and one from the board, and it needs to be advertised that way because people that, that are not here might wanna be here to see who the commissioner is, they might not wanna be. But they don't have to be here, but they have to have the, the opportunity to be here.
I, I...
We could fill it.
I do too. So I withdraw my motion. I move that we fill all four seats tonight. I'm willing to take that risk.
I'd actually made a note, intended to take the three away when we addressed the agenda earlier.
I wish you had of.
I didn't ask for it to be put, I mean, that wouldn't...
So we're referring to the three, meaning my seat?
I did, I meant commissioner.
The vice mayor's seat and...
Mr. Hall. But then you have Mr. Sutton's term has expired and so one of us needs to be selected to replace.
Does he take his term?
When does his term expire, Dylan? When did Commissioner Sutton's term expire?
The election. But he entered that bill and is replacing.
All of our appointed things like their served a term, if I'm not mistaken.
Has the second been withdrawn? The motion was withdrawn.
Are we gonna select all four?
Well, once we get the motion off the floor, then I'll make a motion that we select all four.
I'll run my second.
Now, I make a motion that we select all four, recognizing that City Attorney has provided his counsel that he believes we should redo it. I believe we don't have to, and I believe, I believe we can pick all four.
Is this in discussion or we gotta get a second?
We need a second.
Have a motion on the floor?
We want a second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Based on legal counsel's advice, I will not participate in the discussion.
Well, I agree that we shouldn't go against whatever the attorney advises.
Okay, if it says three and we only fill two, do we break the rule, Mr. Cantrell? Or if it says three and we only do one, do we break the rule?
No, you're saying you're gonna fill three seats and you chose to only fill one. But if you, if you exceed it, you're, you're breaking what you put in the agenda. And also, these, these planning commission seats, it's, it's pretty well common knowledge that they were, at the time this was put on here from, from the, did not anticipate the board seat, the person's gonna sit from the legislative body, because everybody knows that, that that seat is from the legislative body and this doesn't say that. It's just, it's not, it's very clear to me that it means the three other seats not referring to the legislative seat, however you fill them. It's not referring to the one that's gonna be elected, the commissioner's gonna be elected from this legislative board.
Restate your motion, please.
Well, my motion is that I believe that we can fill all four, because as stated, it says discuss and undertake action on appointment of three planning commission seats. Period. Now, the question is can you raise it from three to four? And I believe we could probably go back through the minutes and find situations where we added, to the stated number of people we started out with, we've added additional people without going back and re-advertising. So, so the issue is, does the term planning commission seats, is that generic enough to cover the one that must be filled by one of the board of commissioners? And no disrespect intended against Larry, I just think his, his determination is too restrictive. I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the harm.
Well, we're still open for discussion. I, I agree with Vice Mayor to appoint Larry as legal advisor on it, and the, your first motion would solve all the problems that we're discussing right now, if we deferred that until we had it correctly stated on the agenda, for all three plus one to be elected and put on there. And that would be the, that would be able to correct it and should, should solve all the problems.
And again, no disrespect for our city attorney, he is bound to give us what he believes is an accurate interpretation, but the operative word is that, advice. but the operative word is that advice. And advice means you can take it or leave it. It does not necessarily mean that it is law. It is his interpretation of, of what's written on the paper, and I happen to have a different interpretation. And this board can take a different interpretation than what our city attorney gives us.
Well, I mean, I apologize to the people. I do find it, you know, embarrassing. But I cannot go back from the, the thought process is we need to go by what our city attorney recommendation he gives us. And what's two weeks? I mean, we've drug them out for, you know, however long now. So, if we have our attorney saying that we shouldn't, then, you know, for whatever reason, two more weeks is not gonna stop. We can still discuss. We can still have them come up and give their thoughts why, you know, if, you know, typically we would have the people come up. They can go ahead and come up and tell us why they want to serve, and we can go ahead and make that thought process. But, you know, I just don't understand what a couple of weeks is gonna matter if our city attorney's given us directive that it wasn't worded correctly on the agenda to do what we want to do.
What?
If, if I could clarify something, I'm, I'm...
Go ahead.
I don't claim to be infallible. The board certainly has every right, legal right, to accept my advice or not accept it. What I am trying to give you is, in addition to what I see legally, is put you in a position that if somebody challenges this, and I don't know that they will, don't know that they won't, but what I'm trying to do is put you in a position that if somebody challenges it, I can go to court without any problem and know that I have something I can defend. Now, would I go to court and defend this if, if, if you do, if you decide to do all four? Absolutely. I will defend it to the best of my ability. I will defend this board to the best of my ability. But I would not be in the same position I would be in that is, if it's advertised where I absolutely know it's correct. And if you have to go to court with that, you can say, "Your honor, here it is." It said three seats and the legislative seat, or the seat to be from the, elected from the Board of Commissioners. No question about it. Now, I mean, you can, can do whatever you want, and, and I will still defend it to the best of my ability. But I am not trying to delay this thing. There's nothing in it for me whether it's filled tonight or filled next, fill next two weeks or two months. But I'm trying to give you the advice that will put us in a position on any and all issues. And, and you could still lose, but you wouldn't lose on this one. I would want to put this, this board and this city in the best position it can possibly be in, because you've heard me say this before. There's only two types of cities, and this is not correct English, but it makes a point. Them it's been sued, and them it's gonna be sued. And I don't mind going to court, but I want to go there with at least the best defendable position I can possibly have. And that's the only reason that I, that I said this. Can you do, can you fill all four? Certainly. That's, that's, that's your call, and I will defend it to the best of my ability either way.
Well, it comes to my mind, and, and I'm certainly not an attorney, but the, it seems to me that if someone challenged this, the first thing that's, that's going to be decided by the court is do they have standing to challenge it? And since this fourth seat that we're talking about has to be filled by statute from one of us, the question to me becomes, the only people with standing to challenge it are the four commissioners.
That would be incorrect also, because the decisions that those people make doesn't just affect those four commissioners, it affects the whole city. And any citizen would have standing to challenge it. Now, whether they would win or not, that's, that's the big question. Would it affect the decision that was made if they found out that the board was sitting illegally? Probably not. The history of, of those type of cases is that if a mistake is made, and it's just a mistake of, of, of doing something like this, not something that would, would impugn dishonesty, the courts usually leave those in place. But again, that's, that's your call.
If I may, because if everybody knows what a motion is made, it has to be seconded so we can have these discussions on it. And I personally had rather, if I need to withdraw my second, I will. Like to just go back to the first motion that you made. We defer it till it's properly listed on the agenda item for discussion.
Your second's been withdrawn. We have a motion on the floor needing a second. There'd be no second, the motion dies. The item on the agenda was discuss and/or take action on appointment of three Planning Commission seats. And I'm prepared to discuss the, make a motion of nomination out of the seven, and thank everybody for their interest. First of all, just to know that you would be willing to serve the community and take out of your own personal time, we're very grateful. Second of all, to have spent many, many meetings trying to just see how this goes, I'm sure you may even want to raise your hand saying, "Forget it." Or this is maybe not what I signed up for. I apologize that it's going through the process, but there are sometimes things that are unforeseen. I would like to make a recommendation for the three seats to be filled with Mr. Michael Mitchell, Ms. Marcia Elliott, and Todd Behan. And those are my three recommendations for the appointments of the available Planning Commission seats. Other recommendations?
I'd like to make a recommendation that Commissioner Allen DeSalle, Commissioner Patty Carroll, and Commissioner Stuart Johnson fill those seats.
Other recommendations?
Well, I don't understand with you doing them all three in order, how... Well, I mean, you're recommending three in order. Well, I mean...
Three out of the seven I've recommended. Just asking for other recommendations, whether they be consistent, more, different, new. The floor is open for nominations at this point. We have six nominations for three seats.
Everyone that's been nominated, are they present? Because that is a requirement.
Yes. All six are present? Yes. Other nominations? Ms. Teresa, oh, go ahead. Nominations?
Well, the other ones that I would want to nominate's not here, so if that's the requirement...
Well, they're not all here.
Huh?
They're not all here.
I, I just have concerns that we need to pick our member first before, especially since three current members have been nominated. And so I renew my motion to defer it to the January 3rd is... And I, I apologize, just like the mayor. I think she's absolutely right here. We've dragged this out too long. But I, I think it's very important that we pick our own representative first before we decide this. And so I, I renewed that initial motion.
Just one, one reminder, the reason why we're here tonight is because the election had not been certified the night we were gonna do it. So, let's just not, remember, we just didn't omit it or ignore it or anything like that. We had it on the agenda, the election was not certified.
No, it's not a staff issue, State Manager. It's, it's board issue. It's not staff.
I'll renew my second on that motion.
We have a first and second for deferment, discussion?
Yes, sir, just... My second is that we defer till we have a correction on the agenda for all four. That's, that's the only reason I'm deferring. So, we have the correct wording on here.
Well, that line item that was omitted from this agenda would have read discuss and/or take action on the appointment of Planning Commission seat from commissioners.
Well, it didn't say that, though.
That's what I'm saying. That's what's been deleted, so that'll be added to the January 3rd agenda without question.
I think you will make that from the Board of Commissioners.
Of the Board of Commissioners? From?
From, because it's gonna be a, a member of that board.
Okay. The verbiage there, Ms. Teresa, if you have any questions. So, with the recommendations on the floor, and now a new motion on the floor, what would be the proper procedure?
Do you have, do you have an amendment on the floor? I've heard amendments.
We have a, a motion and a second, and we're in discussion, but we had nominations. We have six nominations on the floor prior to the motion.
Okay. If you go back on those, on those nominations and withdraw those, and then vote on your motion. Because you, you can't, you've got motions on the floor that you're gonna, I mean, you've got motions for nominations, and you're gonna have, excuse me, you're gonna have to withdraw those. And I assume those motions could be made again at the, at the meeting in January if you want. But you need to withdraw those, those nominations and then vote on your motion.
And we don't have to wait till January. We could have a special meeting. With only that on the agenda.
That's the six to seven p.m. this afternoon that wasn't progressive.
Not a workshop, an actual meeting to seat the people.
So, why do we have to withdraw the nominations?
Because you have, you have nominations, you've gotta withdraw them or defer them because they came before your motion did. You can defer them with the motion. You can, you can defer those nominations to the meeting that you're gonna have, that deferred the three Planning Commission seats. Just defer your motions, your nominations with those. And then you've already got them, and you just bring them back on the floor when you bring up your, your agenda for the filling the three seats and the one commissioner's seat.
So, the nominations came before the motion. Why can't we vote on the nominations?
You can vote on the nomination, but if you, if you've got a motion on the floor, you're either gonna have to withdraw the motion and vote on the nomination.
But that came after the nominations.
Okay.
My thought is, we, we were in the middle of nominations, and a motion was made.
You withdraw the motion that's out there to defer and vote on, and, and ask for vote on the nominations? You can't have two items on the floor at the same time.
I agree. I was positioned in a motion in the middle of nominations.
I will withdraw my, my motion. And I will also ask to be withdrawn from the nominations. I would, I'd have my name removed.
Is your second removed? So, we can discuss nominations where we were before the motion?
Well, the second's no longer valid if I remove the nomination, I mean, remove the motion.
If you withdraw the motion, I mean, you, you, the, the second has no, no meaning, so you can withdraw it or not withdraw it.
I would like, I would like to remove my name from the nomination.
So, at this point, we have four nominations for three seats. I would like to do a, at this point, a, a voting or other nominations. I mean, we have four people available for our three seats that are open for us to get...
Mayor, you said these folks were here. I don't know them. Would they introduce themselves, please?
I believe there's more, there's more nominations because these three individuals were nominated also.
Well, they withdrew, and I do as well, so...
Did you request them to speak?
Well, I, I just would like to, I mean, I don't know them, so I would like to know who I'm voting on. I mean, I've read their paper, don't get me wrong, but I, I just don't have a face to put with the paper. So, if they would just come to the podium and introduce themselves, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Mayor, typically in past, as I recall, and somebody correct me, they kind of just not only say their name, but give us a little bit, you know, information or maybe why you want to serve. Is that okay with you?
Sure, thank you. My name is Todd Ben. I've been a resident here in town for 12 years now. I have lived in areas such as Fairview my entire life, meaning that just outside of large cities, and experienced what this type of growth happens that we're about to experience here. I'm also a business owner that, I'm planning on moving my business here to Fairview from Franklin. Been in business for 15 years, so not only as a citizen, I have concerns, but as a business owner, I have concerns of where we're heading as a city. So, I would very much like to be on this board, and I appreciate you even considering me. Anything else that you would have for me?
No, sir. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Good evening.
Mike Mitchell. Lived here for 20 years, raised three kids. I've seen what's happened to Fairview, seen the direction Fairview's going. Just wanted to be a part of it. It's what I do for a living, so I'm pretty adapted to, to what I think the Planning Commission needs and would like for y'all's nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Elliott. It's a pleasure to stand here again and thank you all for your service. I never go tired of saying that because my passion for most of my adult life has been community. We worked in Haiti for 10 years doing primarily humanitarian aid. Literacy was my passion at that time. We also have a young adult that, in our family, a 23-year-old who has a very rare genetic syndrome. And through working with Micah all these years, I, I have grown to have an even greater interest in the way that the development of a city, its business, its land use, its policy affects all individuals. And it would be a pleasure for me to learn from you. I appreciate Mr. Hall's service and also his recommendation. I, for one, would greatly look forward to having training before seating, being seated on such a commission.
At this point, I'd like to call for a vote on the recommendations. There be any other recommendations?
I would like to resume Commissioner Johnson's name to be considered, if you would consider that.
No, sir.
Nomination cease. I'd like to call for voting on the nominations for filling of the Planning Commission seats.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Are you, are we doing them?
We can do them individually, but there's three people and three seats. So, at that point, if you'd like to, I'd be glad to, if not...
Right, but I was making sure all the names you rattled off earlier were the same names.
The three people that introduced, yes, ma'am. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No vote?
You hadn't voted.
I made the motion.
That's not a vote.
I'll call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Sutton?
No vote.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
I say aye. Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner DeSalle?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number B, 8B. Discuss and/or take action on per diem for appointed positions to commissioner and boards. Commissioner Sutton?
I'd like to move that to January the 3rd meeting with the workshop prior to that meeting on the 7th.
January 3rd, 2013. What kind of timeframe would you like to...
One hour would be more...
6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
January 3rd?
Please.
Here at City Hall to discuss the per diem for appointed positions.
Can we have Mrs. Pewter at that meeting?
Item number 8C. Discuss and/or take action on City of Fairview Park survey, park system survey. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Some time ago, I believe it's August, September timeframe, we put a survey on our website to solicit some information about our park system, not just Bowie Park, but our park system, what people like to see. We received 327 surveys back. If you look at some of the numbers, you're gonna see that they, they, they don't add up to 327. But that's because you're allowed to vote multiple times on, on different things, especially as it refers to, you know, what, how many times you, why you went to, to Bowie Park the last 12, in the last 12 months, any special events you or members of your households have attended. Goes on about how many... goes on, but how many times have you or a family member visited Bowie Park? It also goes into how would you rate the importance of each of the following initiatives that Park Administration could pursue? Sorry, put this page over. And of course, the fifth question was what other amenities, facilities would you like to see added? And that's where we had some information that was provided, submitted by the, those taking the survey. And we have approximately, I've got about 12 double-sided pages. If you go back and you look at number four, how would you rate the importance of each of the following initiatives that Park Administration could pursue? I've gone back and I've tried to rank them and I've grouped the very important and somewhat important categories together. And coming out at number one was starting nature programs, and we have expanded our nature programs in the last six to eight months to include various types of ages and various types of activities, as well as adding a part-time program, assisted programmer. So we've expanded there, and that's kind of already taken care of itself. So if you move to number two, the one, it comes in at build more hiking trails. Number three comes in at acquiring parkland, number, I'm sorry, correct, yes, number, build more parkland, number three, build more picnic areas. Number four is, I'm sorry, number four is build more picnic areas, and number five is community garden. And I think I even went on to number six and seven. Six, build more bike trails, and six, more signing, or signing, more bike routes or more signage. So this is a tool that I think we can use as we go forward with developing new park land, new opportunities for our citizens to come in and use our parks, separation of activities in parks, look to you for guidance and hand this to you to maybe at some point get, the Park Board is at their last meeting and discussed this. I would say at length, but I don't know, if you could ever talk about it enough, because it's an activity, it's an ongoing, it's a living document, living, breathing document, and it does, there's plenty of things in here where people have complained, where people have agreed with what we're doing, where people would like to see more of this or that, and they kind of went into some detail. So you can glean from it what you want and see in there. I have not categorized, but I will be more than happy to do that for the next meeting, categorize the comments into general sections. Be, you know, we've got them specific now, but we might can group them into, you know, trails and then maybe under that types of trails. I do, as you look through there, you see a lot more about horses, that type of thing. I'm not a person who rides horses. I don't know what you call that, a horse rider?
A cowboy, by the way.
I'm not a cowboy. I did live in Texas for a couple of years, but that doesn't necessarily make you a cowboy. But I do know that we have a great opportunity here. We're gonna do more surveys and we'll probably refine them a little bit. Had some comments that it looks like it's skewed toward Bowie Park, and I guess if you look at it, a lot of people, that's the only park they realize we have, where we do have the Triangle School area, which is a park. I personally and staff considers where we're sitting a park, the area around the City Hall is a park. Also, we have the Triangle Lake out here off Highway 96, an industrial park that we consider a park and are going to start doing some things there. We also have a 10 and a half acre tract, which has about an acre and a half or so lake on it out off of Elrod, which is also considered a park. So it's something the Commissioners, Bissell had referred to earlier. So there, there's a lot of, for us to sink our teeth in, wrap our arms around it when we move into the budget cycle and the budget process in the late winter, February, March. So as we move forward with that, it's something that we can use as a tool. And as we go into our strategic planning session, I think this is something we need to use as well for purposes of planning there.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you and staff for doing this and taking on the, kind of the bull by the horns. It's been something that we've discussed all year, so it did come to fruition and I am ecstatic. I did have an opportunity at the Park Board to not only go through it with several, just a myriad of different comments and conversations, and as he said, he kind of categorized the somewhat important and the very important, and that was very visible. But I think one thing that really came to mind, and whether y'all spent, you know, five-minute perusing or making notes, it was to me, the people talking, which is so important, that we know what they're trying to say, and this was one venue for finally that it was able to be a voice of the people. Now, some of the voices may have been loud and rowdy, but the voices of the people spoke. This does not mean it's, everything in here needs to be done or not done. It is a barometer of comments, and it's something that we can see what surfaces to the top. But I do think that it categorizes in four different sections. What the city can do through staff and management, what the Park Board can focus on and be able to look forward into different park system opportunity, what we need to sit down with the county. Many, many, many comments were county position comments, whether that be something they would like to see in a benefit on their property. They may have not understood the city doesn't run the ballpark on 96 or different places, but it was very important for me because I was able to categorize 15 things that I would like to sit with our county commissioners at the first of the year, not only just kind of visiting about what their goals are and our goals are, but also to discuss what our people are saying about things they are maintaining or things that they might be able to assist us with in the future. And then the last thing is capital improvements, to where the city is looking at its budget come March to May time, that we can look at what needs to be seriously focused for the people of Fairview in our budget, and are we focusing on things that's gonna spend money that the people either have not voiced they want, or it may not be the betterment for the people, or the citizens may not benefit from that funding or those expenditures. So I really saw four places, and I kind of broke them down. I'll be getting that back to you as far as ideas, and then if you categorize back, that would be great to get back to us. Other comments, hopefully y'all've had time to not only go through it, but did you see the newspaper article about our Skateless Fairview? It's a group of kids that are participating in competitions in Brentwood, the YMCA, and different areas around the county, and that was one of the statements on the survey. And I just think, as the Commissioners talk about what the people want, it is of what's going on, of where they're going. If our kids are going somewhere else to enjoy something, can we try to have that in our backyard? Maybe, maybe not, but it's definitely something to look at. Other comments from the board? Hopefully you've had time to review it.
I have. I appreciate all the hard work you did on it. The only thing I would like to see added in the future, ones I know we voted down in the past, handicapped accessible for Lake Vance. I'd like to make sure we consider that in the next one, the survey that you got. Those are citizens of Fairview also, and I don't see anything in there for that provision. I'd just like to see that added, please.
I do agree, and the people did speak about handicaps several times in the survey, so thank you for highlighting that. Other comments from the board?
Well, I do think, which I already hit on it and we discussed in the meeting, that I think not having, so many people can't separate the park. When we said park system, they automatically think of Bowie Park. So I think a lot of the comments, you know, section has to do, you know, with that, and there's positive and negative and the ideal of change of the park and stuff like that. So, but I just love to hear people talking and having an opportunity to express either way what they feel about it and how they think we should spend their money, and if there is need. So I think it's a great tool, and I look forward to seeing many more and maybe isolating a few things and getting more input. I think it's exciting.
I am definitely not against a skate park, but I just wanna make the point that on the survey for people that don't have the results, 181 people said they wanted a dog park, 147 said they wanted a skate park. So there's a lot of dog owners that want us, just to throw that out there as well.
I just thought it was interesting. We had an article in the newspaper. Other comments?
We just recently got some information through Economic Development, a meeting that we had recently about, there's 50% of the people homes in Fairview have a dog and about 25% have a cat, so that falls probably a lot more than skateboard.
Dog on skateboard. Other comments from the Commissioners? There's not really a position or a place that we're needing to take any type of action, is there, sir?
No ma'am.
I do wanna highlight that there was many, 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 many comments about camping, and that's something we've discussed before, so I thought that was interesting that we had that. And then I also thought, I thought that there is a lot of position here where we can start talking to our grant writer at the first of the year about some of the things that we might be able to begin the ball of conversation in how would grants benefit us in some of these items before we talk about how we're gonna find the money. Any other comments from the board about the survey? Thank you again, Mr. Hyatt. I appreciate all your hard work. This has been very helpful, and we look forward to a new one in January or by February. I think you had mentioned that, so maybe we can get that starting and some questions, two or three, five questions, to where we can talk about what is the needs of the citizens in another department or another area. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Could I back up for 30 seconds? Don just handed me something that I wasn't aware of, and I think the Commission needs to be made aware of it. Back up to A on the appointing of the planning commission seats. We probably would want to put this on the meeting for January, but it just made me aware of the fact that the three Commissioners that you just appointed will be filling seats of unexpired terms of Commissioners who left the planning commission. Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Johnson's term expires June 30th of 2014, and Commissioner Carroll's term expires June 30th, 2013. So this board will need to assign the new Commissioners to that, to one of those unexpired terms. But, I mean, you would be the ones that would reappoint them, but they're still here, I believe. Okay, so we're not violating anybody's due process, but I think it would be better to put it on the agenda with filling the seat from the commission to just assign whichever one of these persons to that unexpired term, because that way, it's not something that administratively staff can do. It has to be done by this board. And I apologize for going back on this, but he just made me aware of the fact that they were all unexpired terms.
Can we assign that? Or does it have to be an agenda item?
No, I would put it on there with the agenda for when you elect your delegate from the commission to the planning commission, and just do that assignment at that time. I'd put it on as an agenda item.
Can we assign it tonight?
You can assign it tonight if you wanna go back and visit A again long enough to assign them, because I just checked, all three of them are still here.
You have Hall expiring 6/30/14, Johnson expiring?
6/14, and Commissioner Carroll 6/30/2013. Two of them are the same.
One six months.
One six months.
Two eighteen months.
Paul was 14, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this not gonna raise the same legal question we had before?
No, because it was on the agenda to fill their seats, and you fill the seats. This is just clarification, because I was just handed this, I didn't know that they were filling unexpired terms of all of them.
Just checking.
Yeah, no, you're good if you wanna do it that way.
Do we make a motion of this one fill this one, this one fill that one, Wilson fill that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the process?
Yes. Or they can volunteer, if one of them wants to volunteer, and then the other two are settled.
Would there be any statement from any of the three? Do we have to address it after we're done with?
Now you're at a point, you can go back.
No, you're at a point where you can go back if you were finished.
Returning back to seven, eight, I'm sorry, 8A?
Yes.
If you were finished with C.
We were.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would there be any, the three of you that would say you do or you do not have a preference of 2013 or 2014 expiration?
One six months and two eighteen months.
Let me explain also, Mayor, that, you know, when that expires, it doesn't mean they're off the board. It just means that this board can reappoint them or not reappoint them.
No comments or, it's kind of an odd question, I understand. Okay.
So we have to put on the agenda to which ones to appoint to which seat?
You can do it now.
I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Elliott fill Commissioner Carroll's of 6/30/13, that Mr. Mitchell fill Wayne Hall position of 6/30/14. I say your name wrong. Ben? Ben? Fill the spot of Commissioner Johnson of 6/30/14.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I apologize for having to go back. I just wasn't aware that they were all on filled terms.
Did y'all make notes of that?
Yes.
Somebody? All right. The item 8D, discuss and/or take action on recommendation from the Park Board. It was presented at the Park Board that from the survey results, that there seems to be a lot of discussion about things that we may and may not be able to fill. And as we discussed the master plan, it was asked that I make a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners to approve the placement of the Bowie Park out parcel into the park system properties.
Is this the 27th item? If possible.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion?
Well, I mean, when I'm being on the Park Board, I understand that some of the desires of some of the people, and anything they discuss has to come back in front of us regardless. So, but they would, it was my understanding that the majority of the board wanted to be able to dream that spot too, and by bringing it into the park system, then, you know, as they move forward and research and come up with plans, then that could be something that is thought about along in that process. And, you know, it doesn't mean, the Park Board can't put anything on it without coming to the board, so they just wanna be able to say, put it in the park system and we can come up with different options.
Other discussion?
Wouldn't it put that back under the Land Trust regulations to where we were limited in what we could do with that property?
That's not what the motion is.
Is that part of the Land Trust?
I would say, I would say no, but I would like somebody to show me some documentation that this isn't already in the park system. It's in the park system. I don't understand what the, what the motion is.
If I understand correctly, it was designated for public safety, but I don't know your answer to your question. That's all I know.
It's already, it was given to us by Dr. Bowie. It's part of the park system. It just has a designation separate for use and was excluded from the conservation easement. It's already part of the park system. I don't understand what the discussion is about.
This was brought up. It was denied, and the vote was no. Not at this time. It will not be in the park system, so I have a difference of opinion that it's not, and it was told by this board, no, it's not in the park system. And when we voted on what was in the park system, it was excluded, and at this point, it's being asked for it to be included, so it could be discussed as we go through the survey and as we discuss different options to present to the board, that that be a piece for us to discuss also, because you can't put everything in Bowie Park, nor is that the intention of the Park Board.
Well, I've still got my question outstanding.
What was your question?
Would it put it under the Land Trust, the part of the park?
I don't...
If not, there's no change in the designation it is now.
I don't think it will, because the Triangle School property's not, you know, that was a specific acreage that was put in that Land Trust, not an area.
Is it considered the part of the Fairview Park system?
It's not part of that, it's, go ahead.
Is it considered part of the Fairview Park system?
So under my standing, it is.
Mine too.
Designated for public safety, not for park use.
Okay.
The, the people that work in the park use it as part of the park every single day.
So when the Park Board is given direction to do a master plan on the park system, and they say these parcels are all you're to discuss, and that was not a parcel, you're saying we can discuss it without having it in the park system under your direction?
It's in the park system, and I would say you could discuss it.
The minutes say no. The minutes say no. Because y'all voted no, it was not part of the park board discussion under the master plan.
Well, my understanding of this was when discussion.
That's totally, go ahead, go ahead.
It was, we were discussing what other properties we would use for these new parks. So it wasn't necessarily saying no, it said not at this time. We don't want to give this over for that discussion. But, so that's how I understood it. So I don't know what minute, you know, you're reading, but, or how it was worded, I guess, because I'm just basing it off of my memory. But also, we were at the point where the land is not necessarily part of the park system. It's just more land that we, the city owns and there's very limited. And so the discussion that night was why would we put all our land and designate it for park? And so that's the way I understood it that night.
Well, I understood it as it's, all of it is part of the park system. It is separate from the conservation easement and that night it was voted on since it was already deemed for public safety not to be a parcel that would allow the park board to discuss because we already had another avenue for it. Now, if we want to go back and change the motion to say we will give the park board the authority to bring us some recommendations for that land, that would be permissible. But the property itself is still part of the park. It was given to us by the same deed. It was all in the same, same thing. It is the park. It just was set aside for a different use.
And I totally understand that. The position that the park board is in is they were given strict direction that these parcels, we even went down to where we had maps and parcels of every piece of ground and that one was excluded for us not to discuss and where the recommendation from the park board comes now that the survey has been reviewed and the results have been for the Board of Commission to approve placement of the Bowie Park out parcel into the park system in those properties.
It's in the park system.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
One of the reasons that we, the Public Safety Committee report, we wish to expand it and discuss some of these issues was that we anticipated that this was going to come up. And what, what we were trying to add to the conversation is that we're not, we're, from the Public Safety Committee standpoint, we think that that parcel does not serve, even though it's been designated for our use, for public safety use, it's probably not the best use of that property. So in terms of where we're sitting, or I guess where I'm coming from is I think everybody is right. I think it's part of the park system, but I think it has been designated in past action in the minutes as being for use of public safety. And currently, the only use is for public works, to put mulch and stuff out there. So I have no objection if the park, just like we chose other properties that we have available to the city and the Public Safety Committee says, you know, if we were going to build a fire training complex, Deer Ridge is the best place to build it, not the 27 acres behind the park. I have no objection as a commissioner if the, if the park board wants to look at that 27 acres and come forth and say, well, if you're not going to use it for public safety, then maybe this is what we ought to use it for.
And I'm prepared to make that as a motion and make it fully stated that this property has and is part of the park system and allow the park commission the authority to put this on a future agenda and bring us recommendations on that withdrawing anything having to do with public safety from now on.
My point in all of that, and I apologize for not finishing quite quick enough there, but my point in all of that is from, from my interest in Commissioner Sutton, I'm speaking for him, but I think he would agree with me. Our interest is being the stewards on the Public Safety Committee. We're, we're not yet ready if, if my fellow commissioners and mayor are not willing to move with us to locate our training complex and move forward at a different, give us a different location where we can pursue that. We're not ready to give up that designation yet at this point that says that's not for public safety. Because that's our, that's our punt, if you will. So, but, you know, I'm hopeful that we can meet all the, the needs here, that, that we can look at the property in its total and come up with good use for each of the pieces of property. And that may very well be that the Public Safety Committee and the law enforcement and the firefighters don't need the 27 acres. They certainly don't need 27 acres.
Right.
So, so, you know, if there's a better use for it and somebody has a better idea, I think we're foolish if we don't hear it.
Appreciate that. The motion on the floor is the board, park board has made a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners to approve placement of the Bowie Park out parcel into the park system. We have a second. Be any other discussion?
I'd like to amend that to, to say that the board will, will, would like for the park commission, we don't have to do anything to move it. We just simply would like for the park commission to expand and offer us suggested uses of the property. That they can do that without having to have it designated under their control.
The reason I don't think that that's a very clear way is just as we've kind of waffled back and forth for a year over the different things that might and might go, when we had the layout of the land, the plats of the land specifically excluded from that approval was Deer Ridge and the out parcel. So I cannot say that it's just a meshed yes. It's a yes, it's in the park system for the benefit of the park board to move forward on the master plan that was given to them as a task. So just saying, oh, well, I think it is, is very gray when it comes to presenting something and being told that is not the parks board's agenda, nor were you given the task because that was excluded in this meeting. I'm asking today that it be included to where it's clear there is no gray area, that as we discuss and bring forth a plan, it's not that we're doing it on land that we do not have right to discuss because it was excluded last time. That tells me I'm not able to discuss it with the park board.
But wanting to have it to be able to be discussed and wanting to say now it's part of the park is two different things. It's always been part of the park.
I don't disagree. It was Bowie land. That's not a question.
But the motion says that. The motion.
The motion says that the out parcel be included into the park system properties, whereas before it was excluded. It was excluded and Deer Ridge was excluded.
You want to include it as part of discussable property?
Correct. They're asking that the out parcel at Bowie Park be put into the park system properties for the park board's discussion of the master plans.
Do we?
Oh, originally, my helmet originally made the statement that it to be used for something else. It'll be separated from the rest of the park, the 27 acres. Was it Dr. Bowie?
No.
Who?
The board.
The board.
We, we did that prior to.
To the, give it to her over to Tennessee. Okay.
But does anybody here know why we're having to discuss this tonight?
Because the park board had a meeting at the first of December. They asked for it to be on the next agenda. This is the next agenda and it's on the agenda.
I, I agree with you 100%, but do you know why they, they had to ask for that? Because of this survey and all the things that they would like to see in our park, we excluded from our park. And so now we've got all these things that are not permissible in our park that we want to cram on 27 acres.
That's not, and I'd love for you to come to the meeting and discuss because that's not what was discussed nor is that the intent. The survey was a big changer, yes. The survey was giving the people a time to speak, saying they don't want more stuff in Bowie Park and that's respectable. But there is a position where the city has to say they do want this, this and this. And you read the survey, it's pretty consistent. There's four or five things that the people would like to see in their community. We do have the conservation to consider. We do have other land and at this point, that's why it's discussed because it's something that we need to open up and have opportunity to discuss, to see if we can have it, fund it for the people.
But what I, my main point to that is, is as you discussed in the article in Observer, 140 something people said they wanted a skate park in the park. The conservation easement's probably going to say no. So where would it have to go? Somewhere else.
Dog Park.
Which would be the 27 acres. Now, Dog Park, the land trust may say that's okay.
800 acres of Dog Park.
So, but see, that's, that is my true point to this whole thing. The conservation easement is holding us back from what we can do with our own park.
There's also other land and at that point, that's something that I'd like to see discussed. Commissioner Carroll has brought up many times as far as the city looking at other land and being able to maybe budget in of land that would fill things that the people want. And I think that's a benefit.
That was my main point several times in one of the debates recently is that for us to get things in that park that we want now, we're going to have to add hundreds of acres to that park on contiguous properties if we want it to be part of Bowie Park or we can just keep having freestanding parks.
And that, you know, that's been discussed.
But see, that's where the conservation easement is hurting us. Granted, the conservation easement overall was great for the protection of the park, but it's also put limitations on us that we cannot put in there what the citizens truly want.
That's why we look at other parcels that the city owns. We look at opportunities to purchase property for future parks. I believe that's something a city or a county consistently works with, is where are they going to satisfy the people when it comes to nature and natural and play and recreation? Because there's only certain areas that can do that.
But listening to Commissioner Bissell's comments, if public safety is truly not, if we're not to the point to where we've decided on another location, I don't see how we could take this away from where it is right now.
That, that's my concern is that, that, you know, the, our committee and, and we've looked at the 27 acres and tried to lay out how we would build it and the impact on the surrounding area and, and we, we understand that that's not, given a perfect, that's not where we want to go to build our training complex and/or our firing range. That's just not the right place to build it. So, but it is our ace in the hole, if you will, because we, we right now see that as that's been designated for us. So if all else fails in our, in our efforts to find a place to, to start these projects, we have a place to start these projects. We have 27 acres. So there's a reluctance, and I don't think I'm doing my job as, as the commissioner that's a steward on that committee. There's a reluctance to just say, go ahead and we'll, we won't have, we'll just not worry about it anymore. It's not designated for public safety and the park folks want to go out there and build a skate park, which I happen to believe we should build a skate park, but that's neither here nor there. And then we decide that Deer Ridge is for something else and we have to purchase land for a fire complex and we don't have the money to purchase that. So the fire complex goes on and on and on and on and on. And, and our problem with that is that in reality, building a skate park is not going to save our, anybody's life. It's not going to train, better train our police than firefighters. It's not going to help with the insurance. It's a nice thing to do, but, and, and I promote it and we'll vote that if we can fund it, I'll vote that we can build it. But we've got to do it in tandem with the, with the public safety needs. And if, and so I'm all for the park commission discussing it. I'm all for the park commission offering suggested use of the land. I, I just don't see the need today because we're still in the conceptual stage of what we would use it for. I don't see the need to say, okay, you know, that's a better use for it than public safety, so we'll go ahead and turn it over to the park commission to be the lead on that particular piece of property. Not unless we're willing to say the exact same thing about Deer Ridge, we'll turn that over to public safety. Because right now it has no designation whatsoever.
It's just city owned.
So, so, you know, are we willing to, to turn the property at Northwest Highway and the property at Deer Ridge over to public safety and say, you know, now that's, now those two pieces of property are designated for that? I don't think so. I don't think we've developed them enough yet to do that. So it, but it didn't stop me from working with those two captains and coming up with if we decided to designate this for public safety, this is how, this is what we could build on that property. I don't think the park commission is prohibited from doing that. I don't, I don't understand. I understand what we did. That was so it wouldn't get caught up in, in the Bowie Park scenario of the conservation easement and all this other stuff. It was, it was, it was designed to make sure it stayed separate out of that. Because, because I think we all agree, if you read the, the, I think Commissioner Carroll said it very well, if you read the survey, a lot of people didn't make the distinction that we were talking about an entire park system, not just Bowie Park. And so, I think that's what we did when we made that designation some months ago. So I, I go back to what I said. I, if the, if the current park board has some good ideas about how to use that property, I think they could do the same thing that the Public Safety Committee did and say, this is what we would do with Deer Ridge. And then the board can decide what's best in our minds for whatever piece of property. I don't think we're, I don't think we're bound by anything. We can always just vote ourselves and change it and do what's best for the property. That's what I think, so. I'd be happy to vote to, for them to submit suggestions and do it. And whether they include it in the master plan or not, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not a big master plan guy, so.
But really, really and truly, you want me to go or you go?
No, go ahead.
Why wouldn't we ask the park commission to bring us their list of ideas for that property that doesn't fit in the current park?
That's what I'm saying.
Why, why, why do they need the 27 acres when we've got 700 acres that they could put it in? Why do we not have the park commission bring us that?
Did you read the survey?
I read some of the survey.
Because there's majority of the survey says leave it alone and that's respected. But at that point, it becomes a situation now. Your, your statement of bring something, why would you ask people coming free, spending two to three hours to discuss something that they was not given authority to even discuss?
Oh, you don't have to give people authority to discuss anything.
You gave authority of the other parcels and this one was excluded, so there must be some line somewhere or it wouldn't be excluded. It's, they're asking that they have the ability to discuss versus told that's not in the park system, we didn't vote it in.
It's in the park system. It was told it wasn't going to be part of the master plan. They bring us because it's designated for public safety. No matter how many times you say it, it's still in the park system. It's just not an allowable property for them to bring us a master plan for. Now, we can change that part of it, but it's still going to be in the park no matter what. It's still under the park system, no matter what. But what I keep telling you is they are wanting to put something out there that's evidently not allowable to go in the regular part of the park.
No, they have not allowed themselves to waste time discussing something that they don't have authority to do. That was the, you were there, you were there. Their statement was, we can't talk about parcels where not been deemed in the park system. If we spend time talking about it, we are wasting everyone's time. So at that point, you're then again taking great citizens' contribution and just insulting their time and saying, oh, now you can go talk about it, but it's not even something that we've given you authority to talk about. Why would they do that?
That's a real good question.
Well, I think, I think we can give them authority to.
That's all they're asking for here.
To discuss it.
To approve the placement of the out parcel in the park system properties for discussion of the master plan or for discussion.
Well, that, it's the first part that we don't seem to be in agreement with. The latter part, we seem to be unanimous in our agreement.
Absolutely.
So why don't we just change it and just say the park board has the authority to discuss proposed usage of the 27 acres?
Absolutely. It's part of the park.
And don't have to move it anywhere.
And don't have to move it anywhere. We considered a parcel that is now approved for the park board to discuss.
Yeah.
It was excluded, and so was Deer Ridge, and we were not given authority to discuss. And when they asked me point-blank, "What parcels?", and we have all plats laid out, and that one's not in it, I can't tell them, "Let's spend hours discussing something that's not in our authority." And they were asking me to ask you.
I think they have the authority, and if that takes us to vote, I would certainly vote for that, that they can certainly discuss suggested uses for that piece of property.
All those in favor?
Is that the current motion, or is it your first motion?
No, that's my amendment, is to change the wording to that.
Second.
We have amendment of what? Speak that again, please.
That the park board, the Board of Commissioners authorizes the park board to discuss proposed usage of the 27 acres and to submit recommendations as part of their process.
We have a first and second. Any discussion?
Yes. So this would remove the point in here about, to me, turn it down.
Would just allow them the ability to look at the 27 acres and make suggestions. Wouldn't change the designation for public safety, wouldn't do anything. All it would do was give the park board the authority to talk about it and make suggestions.
That's correct.
And their time doing that, and feel like they could at least be heard, their, that their opinion matters. And I, and it does.
I just want a clarification on that.
Working the survey, and I think they need to have access to be able to plan for that property. That's what my amendment does. It doesn't change the designation. It doesn't move it from for public safety to anything else.
It's still public safety, and it's still part of the park.
Yes. Nothing changes except the park board can submit, because public safety's moved on to other locations. We're not going to be submitting things on the 27 acres unless all of our other ideas are, are voted down.
So you're still rejecting that, that parcel, which is a platted parcel, that it is not a parcel of property that's in the park system?
It already is. It's in the park system. It was when she transferred the deed to us. They only...
Any other discussion?
Yes, I have discussion.
Thank you.
I, I like the motion, I, you know, I understand, because I think a part of it, from what I've heard, was that, you know, they wanted to make sure that they could discuss, because there were so many things going, ideals, and they didn't like the idea that that was excluded from the park system, and they wanted it put in. But this whole bargaining tool, I mean, I've listened to all this, I've been to this meeting, this bargaining tool of, "Well, I'll let this, we'll say this, but we're gonna still leave this for leverage, and we're gonna build all this, and we're gonna take every piece of land we have and throw it in park systems and let everybody dream, but we have no money to fund it," which I'm all for planning. I'm a huge, if anybody remembers, I'm an advocate of planning for the city. So, but I just don't know that I like how it's all going, is this is gonna be a bargaining tool for this, or, and, and all of the people wanna do is, you know, discuss options, just as at y'all's committee meeting, y'all brought some great options up. So I just don't really, I just have been dying to say that. I just don't really know why, that, I don't know when we came to the point that we're taking every piece of land that we have, and it's all that we have, and we're already, you know, I don't know. It just makes no sense to me, and I just thought I would let y'all know.
Other discussion? All those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The original motion on the floor? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Moving on to nine, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. We scheduled a workshop, budget workshop for January 17th. On October 18th, we also scheduled a term limits workshop for the same night. Do we still wanna continue talking about that, or just go to the budget workshop?
For January...
17th.
We had scheduled...
A term limits workshop, and, and then at the last meeting, that was on October 18th, and then on the last meeting, we scheduled a budget workshop, midterm.
For six to seven was the budget?
Correct.
What was the term limit thing?
Needing to know if we wanted to go ahead and go with that.
What are the wishes of the board? Thoughts, comments?
I have no desire to work term limits. Nor do myself.
Do you have the interest of continuing the meeting, say at 5:30, or not? Commissioner Carroll?
Was it just, there was some list of other things they had besides term limits? There was, I think the motion was something of, there was other charter things that you wanted to take to Jeremy, a few things. It was worded, I don't know the exact wording, mayor, but there was something else.
I'm still for that and think it would need to be, need much more time.
Probably more than 30 minutes.
We'd need more time for that. When is our, when is our strategic plan meeting? Friday the 18th?
Yes, ma'am, that evening, that's that transportation meeting.
Transportation.
Commissioner Carroll wanted to talk about transportation. Was that the 18th or 19th?
On a Friday?
We had a strategic plan with...
Six o'clock?
The 31st is the fifth Thursday, mayor.
Right, but we had a strategic plan that we had discussed for having TML or just discussion.
MTS, Friday night?
January 31st is the fifth Thursday.
Yeah, it was Friday evening, yes.
Five o'clock on the 18th was the strategic MTS?
Correct, planned.
Okay.
But I still would...
We talked about strategic, uh, planning for the transportation. It can be incorporated into that as well, probably.
But I think the meeting of the charter discussion needs to be separate and needs to be in a workshop setting.
The 31st of January is the fifth Thursday. But there's a whole lot of those questions that we could ask TML that night that would be...
MTS.
Yes.
As far as the charter pieces? As far as changing...
Yeah, that, yeah.
And what time do we have that five to what?
Five to eight.
Well, we'll get what we can get done from five to eight on the 18th with the subjects at hand, unless anyone has any comment, and we'll go to a second one if we're not complete with all the subjects.
And, and the budget workshop is the 17th at six o'clock?
Yes, that's before the meeting.
Correct.
We also have, as you said, the town hall on the 31st if we need to move anything into that discussion. Is everybody okay with that time and dates? Please put on reminders. Any other things for you, commis-, um, city manager?
I just, I wanna wish all of y'all Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, should the world continue tomorrow. And I believe it will. I believe, from what I understand, the Mayans really, I saw something the other night that they, that it's a new beginning, it's not an ending. So it, it's something that one of the shamans recently has been talking about. So I don't know, I guess they're arguing amongst themselves, but Happy New Year. You know, staff has done an excellent job this past year, and we're, we're looking forward to 2013 in a, in a positive Lucky Charm kind of way. 13's not a, a negative, in my book, an unlucky number. I think we're gonna have an excellent growth year and a lot of positive things going on. And so I just wanna wish you, commission and employees, all the other people that volunteered to help us out, and all the citizens, a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Staff comments?
The revenues for November, the target number will be 41.67%. Revenues obviously are skewed because property taxes come in primarily December, January, and February, and they're the biggest part of our revenue. Property taxes at the end of November were 10%, however, as of today, when I looked, they were at 24.7%. So we've, we've gained a lot in December so far. And so overall, the revenues are up 8.8% from 2011. And then expenditures, we are up 19.7% from 2011, and it is, the actual budget itself increased 18% from 2011. So currently, we're at 45%, which is slightly above plan. Part of that's the property insurance and stuff that has to be paid in July. Some items that we are watching are the telephone expense, they are at 55%. Engineering expenses are at 72%. Public notices are at 93%. Janitorial supplies are at 66%, and office supplies are at 96%. And I also wanted to remind you all that during the budget process, you approved a 1% total increase to start in January, so that there will be employees to see them in their first check in January.
You mentioned the office supplies. You started, and I think I asked you this last time, you started a one ordering? So can you tell me kinda what's going on in administration that you're at 90 and you had a one shop stop? Tell me about that.
I did, I looked back, and we decreased that budget $5,000 from 2011, because we thought we could come under budget, which is proving to not be true. Another problem is that we had, we updated the, what do you call this? The MTS, those were about $2,500 that we didn't expect to expand. Our budget is only $11,000 for office supplies, and that includes all of our toners, all of our paper for the entire suite, heat pens, pencils. It also includes any supplies that we have, such as the, the waters that we have around the building for employees and for visitors. So all of that, I have, Delana is the only one that can order currently, and she is currently instructed to run everything by me before she orders because of the, the budget level. The main expense that we have is toners, and that's something that our, toner for all of our printers, and that's something that our copier company has told us they can look into and maybe bid for us to have a maintenance on the actual printers that would include their toner, but they're, they're just now starting to look into that. You just told me that two weeks ago.
Okay.
That, that could help in the future.
Well, I mean, my thought is that, I kinda smiled when the mayor said that, because I was sitting there going, 95%? But the thing about it is, I mean, that's 11,000, you actually, you kinda referred to like only 11,000, and we cut, but I mean, that's a lot of money a month if you divide it out. I mean, so is there things that we can look at, maybe cutting out of our budget or something we're overpaying, or, you know, maybe we should take that approach and try to figure out where are we overspending? And then obviously, if, I don't know why we thought it would decrease from last year or why that was, you know, presented that way. But those typical expenses typically don't decrease from year to year, because you're adding more employees, you're doing more paperwork and stuff, so, but I, I really would like to see us look at a way to, I mean, those should be the simple things, that we should stay in budget. It should be easy. It shouldn't be hard to figure out how to stay in budget for something as simple as office supplies. But you currently talked about the books, and I know that's something that, you know, it's not a yearly expense, you're not gonna update, so that was probably something we didn't figure out. But anyway, so I, I would just like to suggest if we can try to find a way to, obviously you're doing it now, but try to find a way to cut things maybe for next year, or look for ways to cut costs. And definitely remind us when it comes to, that we cut the budget five, I mean, you know, we need to...
The part of the reason we need for cutting the budget was we thought that once it was centralized, we might not spend near as much. And that hasn't proven to be a true statement.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments from the board, from Ms. Pewett? Thank you. Other staff comments?
Just got a couple of quick things. Saturday, 22nd, starting at 12 to 3, we have the memorial tree, remember tree at the Alfred Lashman Park, and the eighth annual holiday Irish concert on the 23rd, starting at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Other staffs? Nope. City attorney comments?
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to take the opportunity to wish, I know this is the last meeting of this year and, and before the beginning of the new year, but wish all the boards that I have not met with, some of them meet Barisalem, but wish all members of those boards a happy holiday season. I wanna wish the mayor and this board a happy holiday season, the city manager and the staff, all the citizens of Fairview, I hope you have a happy, a very happy and safe holiday season. Thank you for allowing me to work with you for one more year. That's all, have mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commission, conversation? Commissioner Bissell?
Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and if you travel, please be safe and hug your children.
Commissioner Carroll?
I would like to echo what y'all have already said, but I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas, and, you know, family's important, spend time with them, you know? And that's what the season's about.
Commissioner Johnson?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Commissioner Sutton?
I'd just like to echo the Merry Christmas to everybody, and force to keep in our minds and our hearts the families that just had a tragic loss, to keep in our minds and hearts the people that do not have, and if you can help, to reach out and help someone, anytime, especially if they've been shot and, there's a lot of these families out there, probably part of that, paid with a shopping cart, and it was to see those kids die and know that they probably wouldn't have had any money. And I would say, definitely can, and self, you can reach out and, 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 and help the public with helping. So, and keep the people in minds and hearts, and truly, God bless the children, and I can't imagine what they're going through over these tragedies. In reflection of that, I'd like to compliment Chief Harris on their quick response they had with the county, other cities, police departments, for security reasons, making some fast decisions, and putting some things out there for us to move forward with, to protect these children. They've been talking about it for a long time, and I'm gonna push, and there's a push. County mayor, as I already approved, I was asking for the money, we're already processing for 24-year debt, which would, for the elementary schools, so they're also a big help. The training, they've already put out like $2.7 million for, for right now, just to get that done, so I really wanna commend our place of honor, take this as a game. Merry Christmas to everybody. Board, I very appreciate you for coming down this year. It's been an honor. As you all can see, we don't always go the same, but it's in good, good heart and intentions for us to take and give our own thoughts after it. So Merry Christmas, Senator.
Thank you. I'd like also to thank the staff and all of the employees of the city of Fairview that do their utmost best to make every day count for the citizens, and I wanna thank you. Thanks to our law enforcement and our firemen for the tireless efforts and hours that you put out, and as I see each, each truck and each car that goes by, my prayer is just that you're safe and that the situation at hand be handled and that our citizens be protected, so thank you for that. To the board, I appreciate serving with you this year, look forward to 2013, it's been interesting, but most of all, I'd like you to reflect back on the to-do list that has a lot of check marks, and thank you for your diligence. And as we don't always agree, we are always trying to move forward in one step, maybe stepping on each other's toes, but we're trying to move forward, and I do thank you. And I encourage you between now and January to get a to-do list, or a wish list, or whatever you wanna call it, that we can come together and say, "Okay, this has been done for the good of the people, this is needing to be done, and how are we gonna work towards it?" it?" So progress and moving mountains are possible, and I thank you for everything that y'all do. I also want to say my sympathy to the people who have lost loved ones in this holiday season that comes in such a burden, but I do know that God is peace, and I do know the reason for this season, and it's celebrating Jesus' birth. I thank you for your time and your commitment to all those here and all those in TV land. I'd like to wish y'all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe, take care of your families. Motion for adjournment?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll be adjourned.